Okay, I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting for Monday, March 7th, 2022 to order. Brokaw, please.
Mayor Graffino.
Here.
Trustee Carol.
Here.
Trustee Curtis. Trustee Gately.
Here.
Trustee Lowry.
Here.
Trustee Nedvedge.
Here.
Trustee Salazar.
Here.
Any audience comments? Trustee comments? All right, item one, Steve.
Thank you. Item number one is a supplemental Class B liquor license application from Randall Cafe Bar and Grill. Just to point out, we have a few supplementals that require village board approval. The first year of video gaming was one of them. Supplemental B entertainment license are another one. These are for live entertainment beyond just having like a jukebox or something like that. This is for like having a live band more than two people. We have two currently in our town, Brother Champ Brewing, and the other one is Blue Agave. This request from Randall Cafe Bar and Grill is because they would like to have live entertainment. They would like to have bands on Saturday nights. They would like to have entertainment every other Thursday in the form of karaoke nights. They would like to have mariachi bands every other Thursday, respectively on Fridays, and those are from eight to 10 p.m. and then seven to 10 on Fridays. So ultimately, they're looking for at least eight to nine live events a month. Right now, in the packet, there's a map that we provided, shows you a buffer zone, just kind of gives you an idea of where the residential neighborhoods are. The closest residential is just over 300 feet. That would be the Randall Town Homes, the Randall Highland Town Homes, and then you have to the east, you have the neighborhood Willow Lakes that's across the street on Randall, and that is just around 400 feet away from this from this venue. So that's what's in front of you. The board has the right to put restrictions on this if you do approve it, so you can limit the number of events. We did so with Blue Agave. If there are any concerns.
I drove by there a little, little bit ago, and I was struck by how close the townhomes behind it are. And I think that the request is for 2:00 a.m. in the morning on a Saturday night.
That's correct.
And the thing that struck me was I thought the people in those townhomes were probably in the summertime, maybe like their windows open. I feel like that that would definitely hear it from there. I feel like that it's very close when you actually drive over there at maybe 300 feet, but I feel like it's very close and 2:00 a.m. seems very late to me. That's, that was my initial thought about it.
I think it's a great idea. I think that's one thing we've been lacking in the village is live music. I find myself having to go to Geneva, St. Charles, Naperville, so it would be nice to have something in my backyard as long as it the 300-foot buffer is going to be enough. I mean, I understand what Carolyn's saying. We don't want to make it a burden on the neighbors, but I also think maybe people who live in those communities would like a place they could walk to and see some live music.
I think, I think it's closest to my house, actually. And of course, I'm, my position on live music is I like live music. So I play guitar at church, but I, I, do you think that if they have a mariachi band that they're gonna play till 2:00 in the morning, it's gonna bother people 300 feet away? Isn't a mariachi band like acoustic guitars?
So the karaoke night and mariachi band during the week, so go back, Thursday is karaoke night from eight to 10. And mind you, these aren't set in stone. These are just their ideas, so it could, oh, it's always subject to change. But their plan when they, when they spoke with Natalie about their liquor license was for karaoke nights every other Thursday from eight to 10 p.m. And then mariachi bands every other Friday from seven to 10 p.m. The live bands that would be later would be the nine to two, the nine p.m. to 2:00 a.m. would be on Saturday nights.
On Saturday, right.
But once again, that, that's always subject to change as well.
That was every Saturday they're looking for? I mean, just?
They said every Saturday. So every Saturday, it'd be like a four-piece band, drums, electric guitar, and it doesn't necessarily mean they, they would. They just want the ability to have that. So they could have a two-person band with acoustic only. They're just saying they would like the flexibility to do a full band if they wanted to.
Well, that band had to be inside, though, right?
Correct.
My only concern be it, would be if it became like a dance club or things like that, that'd be my only concern as far as the music. I mean, eight to nine times a month seems kind of excessive, you know, but it's not my business, but I just, you know, little reserve about how often and you know, what kind of crowd it draws.
Isn't it more like, just from my experience going in, they, they sell like pizza and sandwiches, right, pretty much?
They have a pretty big menu.
They got a full menu.
Like a smaller?
They got a full menu there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I, I kind of agree with Laura. I think that we zoned this area or the board. I, I, I wasn't around at the time, but this was supposed to be a commercial district and, and I, I agree. We, people are clamoring all the time for restaurants and bars and places they could go on the weekends and I think it's, I mean, there's not really any place else in town that we can put people unless we're gonna put them back by Target that doesn't have residential around them. So I, I think I'd be in favor of it.
I like the idea of the live music. I'm just wondering if 2:00 a.m. is, is very late for people who may want their windows open that will hear that. I guess, I know there's a noise ordinance, so I don't know how that plays into that. That was my only concern, but I just think it goes really late. I like the idea of having live music. You're right, there's not that much in the village currently, so I like the idea of it. I'm just not, I'm just thinking maybe 2:00 a.m. is late to have it, to go that late.
Just a question, what are the hours at Blue Agave again?
I believe we restricted them to midnight, if I remember correctly, for live entertainment, and we limited to only a couple of times a month, I believe.
Except that's a lot closer to residential.
It is. It backs up directly to residential.
Can we do a conditional improvement and then if, you know, they have certain amount of complaints, you know, we scale it back. I, I just don't want to be overly restrictive when there, there may be no need to be restrictive.
Yeah, I, I'll go with Kevin on this because generally speaking, if there's a issue with an establishment with their liquor license, the, the mayor's liquor commissioner can request to meet with them and just talk to them about what's going on. You don't want to get to that if you can, if there's certain things that you could do ahead of time, so you don't have to go back and police later, that's easier. So if there were some concerns right now, that'd be good to lay that out now. But ultimately, in the second year of the supplemental B license, the mayor has the ability to issue that license on their own. So if something goes wrong the first year, one of the checks and balances is the mayor doesn't have to issue that license in the second year. So, oh, Kevin, what I, what I would lean to Kevin is if you had complaints, but we approved this action to have live entertainment, I think it would be harder to say that they're violating something if they're, if they're having just loud music, as long as we tell them to turn the music down. I mean, they could still have live music. So I'm saying if you wanted restrictions or limit the number, now would be the best time to do that before it's issued.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, one, once we issue a license, so nobody in Illinois has a right to a liquor license. It's a privilege, kind of like a driver's license, but once a liquor license is issued, now you've created a right, and so it becomes more difficult to take it away. I, if we condition the right, we're saying upfront that it's conditional and, and we would have more basis to pull back on it if it was conditioned, you know, based upon, you know, whatever, you know, whatever the condition is. You could give discretion to the liquor commissioner, you know, it could be conditioned on there not being, you know, custom, you know, complaints that it might have to be pulled back to midnight or something if you get complaints, if there's music late on a Saturday. It, it's definitely easier to, if we condition it upfront, it's easier to control that than if we don't.
And if trust, to trustee Curtis's point, excuse me, if you wanted to put a very general condition on it, I would almost envision we started this with a video gaming license where we did it by resolution, and you could put something in the resolution that says that one of the conditions is in the event that there are complaints, the liquor commissioner may review the license and impose further restrictions. I mean, Kevin, would you have any, you wouldn't have any problems with that, would you? Kevin? Oh, I'm sorry. It's okay. I said if we put it in the resolution when we approve the supplemental license, that the liquor commissioner can further restrict it upon, you know, complaints from residents. Yeah. That would give us the teeth to at least go back and say, hey, yes, you need to pull back a little bit. Yep. I think we're set.
And Oak Street doesn't have this license right now?
No, not that I'm aware of.
They have karaoke night once in a while there. I think.
Right, I thought they've had.
They'll have live entertainment every once in a while.
Yeah, they had, they had live music there.
Yes.
Outside, they did on the patio. That's right in the summer.
So.
They had it inside.
Wouldn't that be, this type of a license be required for that?
If they're having live music beyond just like a two-person acoustic band, yeah.
Oh, no, it wasn't. It was only one, one.
It was only one.
One singer.
It actually, I mean, it does say that in the code, it, it, it's a, it's a fine line between the A and B. A is supposed to allow people, like, and I use this example, like the old pop bellies, you go out and pop bellies and someone's playing acoustic guitar, or you have, like I said, radio being piped in over the speakers, that's a Class A. The Class B is when you start to have a multiply, a multiple person band beyond a duo, and you start to have DJs and stuff like that.
Okay.
I, I like the idea of putting the.
The review ability.
I like the idea of that, yeah. I'd be for that.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we're all on board. Okay. I like the idea.
Great. Item two, Steve.
Thank you, sir. Item number two is regarding the Seasons at North Aurora development. This item is the proposed apartment complex off of Orchard Road between Deer Path and Mooseheart. This item was recently at our plant commission meeting last Monday. We envisioned to give the public and the staff opportunity to work through this and the public more opportunity to speak that we're, we're gonna take it back tonight for initial feedback from the board to talk about the plant commission's initial review on Monday. And then this feedback will go back to the staff and the staff will work at the developer to prepare another committee of the whole presentation at a later time before eventually moving through the process to the village board for a vote. With that being said, Mike is gonna walk us through.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. So some of you may recall back in 2012, the annexation agreement for this property was approved. Also was the original PUD ordinance, we're planning development ordinance. And then what that did is that established zoning for the property. So if you look at the map, which will, the, the petitioner is gonna go through the actual development plan, show the site plan, but the actual development is divided by what we call the connector road. It's a road that was required by KDOT to relieve some of the traffic on Deer Path, cutting through to Orchard Road. So that actual connector road divides the property. So the zoning rights were given to the south for commercial, B2 commercial only. North of the connector road in the area that Stephen just mentioned, they have what we, what they're called at that time flex zoning. It allowed for either B2 general commercial or allowed for R4 general residential, which allows for multi-family residential as a permitted use. That same PUD established some standards for design for apartment uses. We talked about the number of brick, the, the number of stories the buildings could be, the number of garages that were required. And then the PUD was just more recently after that re-approved, and what they did was they actually changed the design standards at that time. One of the changes being the original 2012 ordinance required that entryway be given to each unit through the exterior of the building and some sort of interior corridor. That had changed in 2013 to only require a exterior entrance. Also, what changed was at that time, it was in the 2012 ordinance that 20% of the units were to provide, be provided a enclosed parking space or a garage space. That later changed to 100%. So those were some of the changes between the 2012 and 2013 ordinance, and we'll get into that in a little bit. What is actually being requested tonight are a few things. The first being site plan approval. The PUD that was approved establishes guidelines for site plan approval. There are some standards that are in the staff report on page five of my report, and those standards are, you know, what the development is supposed to adhere to. But in this case, the site plan approval, although it's a code requirement, you know, any sort of development that's greater than two-family dwellings is supposed to go through this process by code. But what this PUD was, it allowed the, it allowed the village the right to come back once a site plan was submitted to the board, bring that plan commission, that, that site plan to the plant commission, the village board for review. And as opposed to doing a full public hearing at that time, because there were no development plans associated with the 2012 and 2013 ordinances, there were no site plans, so it was basically deemed they would come back at a later point with the plan. At that point, as opposed to doing the full gamut of public hearing notices, they were just required to send letters to some of the adjacent property owners. We're, we're here having a public hearing. We'd had the public hearing for the plant commission for a different reason, which I'll get to. And one of the other requests too is sort of perfunctory, it's establishing the Lot One Seasons at North Aurora subdivision, which would be Lot One, the area north of the connector road. So typically, for, like I said, for this development, had they adhered to all the standards, you know, made the three-story buildings were allowed, they're doing two stories. They're meeting the threshold for the amount of masonry that's required to be on the building. One of the items that they're not meeting are the enclosed parking spaces. So what this did was by amending the PUD, it triggered the full public hearing for the property. That's why signs were posted on the property. That's why all of the, all the neighbors within 250 feet of the property received letters. That's why this was posted in the newspaper. Again, we did the full, full public hearing because in order to amend the PUD, it's a special use in of itself, so they had to go through that entire process. And one of the reasons why they had to go through that was because of the new, the 2013 PUD ordinance required that each unit be provided a garage space. And the, and according to the site plan that's been submitted, there are a total of 172 enclosed parking spaces. Now, if you take the total number of units at 260 and you say that there are 172 spaces, that roughly equates to 66% of the units have some sort of parking inside available. But I just want to do note that some of the parking spaces and garages actually have tandems. So some garages have one space and while others have two, and there are also standalone garages that are shown in the site plan in the parking lot. And again, that original PUD ordinance only required 20% of the units to have enclosed parking. The second one was the fact that the PUD ordinance, it just, it made mention of the, the processing of development plans. Look at the code, when someone comes through, wants this all, if this were to be approved by the village board, they would submit final plans and way, according to the village code, they would have to come back with the final plans to the village board, even if the final plans were identical to the plans originally approved. This process would allow them to go through the, the, the hearing process with the board. There would be a set of site plans, building elevation plans, preliminary engineering plans that would be submitted and approved with the final ordinance. And what that means is that if the plans that were submitted as part of the permit submittal matched the plans that were approved by the village board, then they could be approved by, right by permit. And this is something that we've done customarily with a lot of the developments we've been doing recently. It, it sort of helps move through the yearly development cycle, given our time constraints with the seasons. So this has been common practice with a lot of recent developments. And also too, if you recall, I mean, with the prayer board meetings, we had done the minor change for the PUD for the, or a PAC development. And what happened in that case, the plan that was approved by the board did not match the plan that was submitted, so that's why we brought it back. So typically, I'll review those plans, and if I deem it's necessary to bring the plans back, we'll bring them back. But, you know, 95% of the time, the plans that are approved are the plans that were approved by the village board. When the, the developer submitted the plan originally, the, the actual buffer, there's a 50-foot buffer you are required along Mooseheart in this case and Orchard Road. The 50-foot buffer is bounding the northern property line along Mooseheart Road. Along Orchard Road, they also had the 50-foot buffer. However, after conversations with KDOT, because KDOT, King County depends on transportation, the actual, the actual right-of-way per 2011 intergovernmental agreement that we had with them had to be expanded to 170 feet for the total width of Orchard Road. So what that did was it cut into their property. So the property owner is going to have to dedicate 15 feet to KDOT. So they lost 15 feet of that buffer area that was originally submitted, because again, the original plans did have the 50-foot buffer. And also too, the parkway trees that would align Orchard Road, which you'll see on the plan shortly, they would, if KDOT deems that those plans to be an obstruction or for a reason they don't want them there, they would be, also be taken up, because those are also code requirements to be spaced at 40-foot intervals. But after speaking with the developer, they would be willing to take the, if, if the parkway trees are not being planted, they would take the trees at a, at a one to two ratio and put them into the buffer. So basically just be adding those trees directly to the north or west, if you will, into that buffer zone area to accommodate additional trees. We had the public hearing last week, Tuesday, for the, with the plant commission. The meeting was rather well-attended. We probably had about 40 people show up. There were people that asked questions, people that voiced their concerns about the type of use, the byproduct of the development potentially being traffic, stormwater, parking, and just the multi-family use of the property in itself. And at that time, we did explain that the underlying zoning of the property does allow for the actual multi-family apartments as a permitted use. It's just the fact that they have to get the site plan approval and all the other approvals that, that I mentioned previously. The plant commission was favorable towards the development. They did unanimously recommend approval of the development. They did have some concerns about the location of the clubhouse, as it was located more westerly in the plan, adjacent to one of the residents off Deer Path, but they've since come back and you'll see in the presentation that they'd amended that and given an alternative clubhouse location. Now, staff did recommend approval of the petition, subject to eight original conditions, and then the actual nine, 10, 11 conditions, those were added by the plant commission. And generally too, again, the, the clubhouse location was just meant to be rereviewed. And then that further traffic information was to be considered for study prior to, you know, final approvals, looking at some of the northbound movement from the connector road onto Orchard Road and looking at some of the area traffic counts, which I believe they're, they've already been engaged in. And lastly, there was one, one of the local residents had mentioned the fact that they had oak growth, oak trees in their backyard on their property, but some of the root systems might have been going into the adjacent property and some of the, potentially the canopy of the tree. So one of the conditions was that preserving those trees to the best of ability so that they're not harming the canopy of the root structure. So the petitioner is aware of that and, and has already mentioned that they would be taking that into consideration. So with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to fiduciary to go through their presentation.
Good evening. My name is Tony DeRosa with Fiduciary Real Estate Development, and thank you for the opportunity for us to be before you this evening. We're excited to present to you the Seasons at North Aurora. The presentation that I put together tonight covered a little bit about our company. Show you some of the projects that we've done so you get a feel for the quality of the type of work that we do. I'm gonna talk about the property, talk about our vision for it, talk about how we've laid out the site, and talk about some of the, the conditions that Mr. Toth mentioned earlier that we're working on addressing before we turn over to any questions that you may have. So first of all, Fiduciary Real Estate Development, we're based in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. We focus on mixed-use luxury market rate, multi-family projects, as well as commercial retail, as well as medical office. We were founded in 1984. We've grown our business into becoming one of Wisconsin's largest real estate companies. We've owned and or developed upwards of 11,000 apartment units in our history. So I'll walk through just a few projects to give a feel for the quality of some of our most recent multi-family work. This is a project called State Street Station in the suburb of Milwaukee called Wauwatosa, a very urban site. This was 148 apartments on top of 20,000 square feet of retail. This was an example of a four-story building that we built, that we did in partnership with the municipality. Here's another perspective of the building. You can see, you'll see a common theme in all of our projects in terms of high-quality materials. Arabella Apartments was a project in Cedarburg, Wisconsin, which is a northern suburb of Milwaukee. This was an example of a three-story building that we did with underground parking. This was a site of a former closed-down school that we redeveloped with the city of Cedarburg. The next picture gives you a feel for some of the, what our interiors of our apartments look like. When we come into a community, we're known for being best-in-class in terms of the finish levels that we provide for our residents. The Seasons at Randall Row that you see on your screen is in West Dundee, Illinois. This was our first Seasons branded project that we did in Illinois. This project was a two-phase project. We had great success with the first phase. We're just finishing our second phase right now. This has been incredibly successful in the community and very well-received, and this is very similar to what we're proposing here this evening. Some additional photos of the Seasons product. Again, in the West Dundee market, we're known for best-in-class amenities within the local submarket. Here's some interior pictures of what our interior clubhouse looks like. We finished our first phase of the project roughly a year ago, and since then, we've been between 98 to 100% leased. And then some additional pictures of the exterior, as well as the interior of the apartments. Our team, I've introduced myself, one of my other teammates here, Ashley Poole from Fiduciary is here this evening with me. Our design partner is AG Architecture. Our civil engineering partner is Manhart Consulting. Jared Plasek is here this evening. If you should have any civil engineering-related or stormwater-related questions. We also have our traffic consultant from KLOA here this evening. He'll, he'll talk, Luay Abuna will talk a little further on the presentation on the traffic. So in terms of some basic site information, the overall property is approximately 21.7 acres. It's currently zone R4, which is your general residence district. Our proposed multi-family use is a permitted use under the current zoning. Our density that we're proposing is 12 units per acre. So when we look at a vacant piece of property, we first look at what is the highest and best use for this property. You look at the four major product types of real estate and determine what is the highest and best use here. So first, we look at office. Would office be a good fit here? You look at how office demand has significantly changed over the years. That trend has further accelerated with the onset of COVID and remote working, which is a trend that we think will continue for years to come. Therefore, we've concluded that office is probably not the right fit for this property. Then we look at retail, and you look at the Amazon effect and how e-commerce is changing how we live our lives and how we buy many goods and different products online and shrinking the need for brick and mortar retail like we used to. One of the things that I think this, all of the land here, the parcel that we're working on, as well as the 20 acres to the south, could go all commercial if need to. One thing I think with multi-family on the northern portion of this, I think it allows the village the opportunity to kind of right-size, because the likelihood of seeing 40 acres of retail here, at the end of the day, is, is probably not realistic. So we think that is one benefit to this. Then thirdly, you look at industrial. Well, industrial demand is incredibly strong. We don't think that the parcel size, layout, location, or its adjacencies would make it a good fit for industrial here. Then you start looking at the residential side, and you look at first, single-family. Would single-family work here? Fairly small in terms of feasibility size of, of what a feasible single-family parcel would work. It's an odd parcel size. It's relatively small. There's also significant upfront infrastructure with the connector road that has to go in. That's one of the requirements with, with the IGA as well as the annexation agreement, that the first developer in has to construct at their cost the connector road, and our development does take that into account. So then we look at multi-family. Would multi-family be a fit here? The village of North Aurora, as well as the surrounding area, has seen limited multi-family development over the past 10 years. There's strong pent-up demand for good quality, modern luxury market rate housing development. We think this is a compatible use with surrounding single-family homes. We think this meets the key criteria to what makes the multi-family development successful in terms of proximity to jobs, proximity to retail conveniences, proximity to the interstate, and it's an appropriate type of housing that meets the needs of the community. Then we look at the demand side of the equation. Is there demand for multi-family here? Our market research shows that there's very actually strong pent-up demand. There's been limited multi-family development in the area over the last 10 years. There's a lot of people that are, want to stay in the community, but are looking to sell their homes, potentially downsizing. The community of this size actually has a, somewhat of an older housing stock with dated finishes with very few modern options for people. The demographic that we're looking for, they're looking for an upscale suburban community to call home. These are empty nesters, baby boomers, young professionals, and really those choosing to rent. Typical resident profile includes people that work in healthcare industries, finance, insurance, real estate, technology, police and fire, service industries, retirees, et cetera. Estimated monthly rent ranges range from $1,400 to $2,700 per month, depending on the size, whether it's a studio, a one-bedroom, or two-bedroom, or a three-bedroom apartment. What we're building here is somewhat unique in terms of we're not catering towards the demographic that's looking to live in your typical three- or four-story corridor building, but rather a smaller-scale building, 20 apartments per building, that gives it more of a condo or townhome type feel. In terms of the proposed development itself, all the buildings are two-story or townhouse style, and every apartment has its own private direct entrance, which is a huge selling feature. We have, within the apartments themselves, private balconies, oversized windows, open concept floor plans, walk-in closets in every apartment, in-unit full-size washers and dryers, as well as upgraded stainless steel appliance packages. In terms of our overall community amenities, we have a clubhouse with a first-class fitness center. We also have onsite property management. These properties, we will, this property will be managed by us, by fiduciary. We are known. Uh, we are known as providing a best-in-class management experience. We're a very hands-on group, and at the end of the day, we're selling a lifestyle, people that what's important to them is about safety, security. And something that meets the needs of what they're looking for while providing a best-in-class housing experience. Next, I'm gonna share a few still perspectives to give you a feel for how the site lays out. This is our main entrance. With the sign on the right, Seasons at North Aurora, the clubhouse behind it. And then walking through just a couple of pictures. Rendering of one of our buildings. This is our clubhouse and pool. Outdoor seating area. This is the interior of the clubhouse. Kitchen entertaining area within the clubhouse itself. And even a dedicated movie room within the clubhouse. The next slide is to give you a feel for what the interior of the apartments would actually look like in terms of finishes. You'll see open concept floor plans, high-end appliances, quartz countertops, and Kohler plumbing fixtures, to name a few. So back in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, when the property was annexed and rezoned, it included not just the northern parcel, as Mr. Toth had touched on earlier, but also the land to the south of the connector road. The approvals back then that said only multifamily could be built north of the connector road. But there could be commercial and retail where the multifamily is shown right now and or south of the proposed connector road. We think as a transition-type use, multifamily not only fits within what the property is zoned for right now. But also provides an adequate buffer, a more preferred buffer to any future commercial that could be that be built south of us. As mentioned earlier, as part of the annexation agreement, it also required the first developer in to construct the connector road, which our plan accounts for. And we will be installing that at our cost. We also think that also provides a better marketing tool for commercial land to the south, given that the infrastructure will be in place. So this was, we have two site plans to share with you. This one, we called the original site plan. This is the one that we shared with the plant commission last week. You can see the connector road on the south end that forms the the southern boundary of our property, yet creates also the access to the commercial land to the south. We arranged the buildings here so that the majority of the park parking is more internal and can be screened within the overall development itself. We've created significant landscape buffers and setbacks around the northern, as well as the eastern sides along Orchard. Our stormwater features on the north and northwest part of the site provide additional interest, as well as additional buffers to neighbors to the west and to the north. The site plan also shows a pretty extensive sidewalk network that wraps around the site as well as through the site. We have a an eight-foot asphalt path along the west property line that connects Mooseheart down to the connector road, and you can loop all the way around the development. One of the comments that came out of our plant commission last week was a request to look at the clubhouse. Actually, Mike, could I have you go back one slide? I wanna. Uh, point out one thing. So at the far left of your screen, you can see the label with the arrow pointing towards the clubhouses. And there was a gentleman that lives in the house pretty much where the clubhouse label, the word itself is. And the plant commission asked us to take a look at alternative layout ideas or options of, is that clubhouse building well? Outside of the setback, is there a better location for it? So if you go to the next slide. So since that meeting, we've been working, we came up with uh an alternative plan for you to digest this evening. This accomplishes two things. First of all, it pulls the clubhouse off of the west property line, and we actually created this kind of triangular landscape. Uh, buffer area that we think accomplishes um the tasks that we are given of. You know, try try to be a little bit more respectful of your neighbor and try to pull it off the property line. So I think we've accomplished that. And then we've also, one of the other comments we received was, you know, maybe it makes sense to have your clubhouse be a little bit more central to the development. So I think we've accomplished uh those two goals. One of the reasons that the clubhouse was on the west property line line was as a result of the fifty-foot landscape buffer off of Orchard. So one of the things I shared with the plant commission last week was, okay, let us go look at this. However, that push on one thing, I'm gonna pull on another. And what I ended up pulling on was, we now we now have encroached uh the sidewalk along Orchard roughly about eight to ten feet into the landscape buffer. Uh, we still do not have any buildings within that landscape buffer. Uh, I do believe that there is some precedent within the village for sidewalk-type improvements to be within that landscape buffer. So that's one thing that. Uh, would appreciate some feedback on uh from you this evening. But we think overall, we think the plan is an improved plan from going through last week's discussion with the plant commission.
Yeah, if I could take an opportunity to um, the the site development standards are actually in the annexation agreement. So they're governed by the village board. Um, what it is, is that the annexation requires that sidewalks be put in basically around the perimeter of the entire development. Basically going all the way down Orchard Road, Mooseheart, Deer Path, um Tanner, and then both sides of the connector road. In this case, we took a look internally and said, you know, what what is the best way to, you know, provide pedestrian movement within this area? Um, so what it is, is that if you look on West Mooseheart in the north part. It, there is a sidewalk going uh to the west. It's gonna connect. Right at the western edge of the development, come down that that bike path that Tony had mentioned. And then it's gonna connect to a sidewalk on the connector road. Now, the portion of sidewalk that is on Orchard Road is more or less private walkway. Um, it's not a traditional sidewalk that goes in the parkway. But what we discussed this internally, there is no sidewalk that would connect to the the north or the east in this location as you're moving towards White Oak. There isn't a sidewalk in that location, nor is there one south in the Orchard Commons Development. And the Orchard Commons Development didn't require one. So as opposed to saying, you know, we're gonna have sidewalk segments go to nowhere, we came up with this sort of plan to bring, you know, I said, bring all the movement on Mooseheart. They had provided the actual path coming down the western portion of their development. Because those properties on Deer Path and Mooseheart are unincorporated at this time. Um, so I don't know if the likelihood is getting a sidewalk in, so they providing that walkway that cuts through to the western portion of the development. Connecting to the sidewalk, and that sidewalk could eventually cross um Orchard Road going to south to the Mango Creek property. And I imagine a similar configuration would be required if the property to the south were developed. That's something we wanted feedback from the plant on the village board because that was in the actual annexation agreement. So something that we can discuss at a later point.
Now we've put together an animated fly-through, about two minutes long to give you a feel of what this could look like.
I hear the music.
Thank you. So the PewDie ordinance has a handful of standards uh that were touched on early before I presented. That spell out some of the underlying property rights that exist with this parcel today. I think it's kind of important because each one, I think, has its own relevance in different ways. So the first one is the building height. Uh, is limited to three stories. As I mentioned, we've designed this at two stories. It's. Um, I think it's more in scale with the adjoining uh surrounding types of uses. Uh, if we did go three-story, I think you could have a much more dense development, but I don't think that type of density is appropriate. And I I think two stories is the right scale here. Uh, each apartment unit is to have its own private entry. I think that's a that's a great feature. Uh, we love it, especially in the post-COVID world or COVID world that we live in. Um, people absolutely love that feature. People are a lot more health-conscious than in the past. Uh, the next one about the parking space that was touched on earlier, um, the original ordinance two thousand twelve required twenty percent, then it changed to a hundred percent. Uh, we're at point six-six or sixty-six percent. Uh, this is one item where, you know, could we technically comply? Yes, by adding, you know, eighty-some, you know, detached garages to the site plan, we absolutely could. I think that would um be a shame for the site plan. I I, one, I don't think there's a demand for it. Two, I think it would change the total look and feel. And what ends up happening is we're we're trying to attract to a broad demographic from, you know, we say we like to rent from people, you know, that are twenty-two and eighty. Between twenty-two to eighty-two years old and everything in between. We're trying to hit different price points for somebody that might be out of college with the first job that might, they might want to live in a studio. They love North Aurora. Uh, but they can't afford a two-bedroom. They can afford uh a studio apartment, but they don't need to pay for a garage. So what ends up happening then? Is other people rent the garages and they turn into storage lockers, and then they chew up the surface parking, and we've kind of, we kind of defeat the purpose. While trying to technically comply with the ordinance. Uh, the fourth one is that we have at least twenty-five percent masonry on the buildings, which we do comply with. And then architectural elements trying to uh have, you know, including anti-monotony standards. As you saw on the renderings and the fly-through, I think we've done a good job of a different type uh mix of materials, a lot of gables and architectural interests. Um, we don't have vinyl siding on this building. This is cement board or hardy hardy siding on the exteriors. In terms of some of the additional conditions uh that came out of last week's plant commission meeting uh that we touched on a little bit. Uh, the first one was about alternative locations for the clubhouse I addressed earlier. Um, Mr. Toth had touched on uh number two about uh health of the existing trees to the west. Uh, I think we're gonna be able to address that with the new alternative clubhouse location. That's something that the board uh finds desirable. Uh, the path on the west side is something that we could probably curve around, you know, as we get a little further down the path and really understand exactly where those tree roots and canopies are. Uh, traffic was another item that was talked about uh at length. Um, so we decided to have our traffic consultant from KLOA here this evening. So I'm gonna turn over to him to talk on the next few slides about traffic.
Thank you, Tony. Good evening. My name is uh Luay Abuna. I'm a principal with KLOA. Uh, as Tony said, we prepared a a traffic impact statement that looked at the impact of the proposed development. And one of the things that we look at is in terms of the trip generation that the proposed development will. Uh, generate during the peak hours and on a daily basis, and how that compares with the traffic on the adjoining roadway system. So. We compared it with the, first, we compared it with the traffic on Orchard Road. And as you can see from the slide here, that the increase in traffic on Orchard Road is assuming sixty percent of the traffic would travel to and from the south. On Orchard Road would uh be a result in an increase of about forty-four trips per hour. Uh, which translates to about eight percent of the uh increase in traffic on Orchard Road. Uh, similarly, if you look at the Deer Path Road, uh, we anticipate an increase of about three percent. Uh, this was based on the assumption of approximately fifteen percent of site traffic will travel to and from the south. Again, this will translate into an increase of about our average of eleven trips per hour or significantly less than one trip per minute. Next slide. Um, so the conclusions that were contained in the impact statement uh included that the traffic that will be generated by the proposed development will not be significant. Uh, that the design of the uh east access road intersection with Orchard Road. And Deer Path Road uh would be under stop sign control and would be adequate in accommodating inside traffic. Uh, just wanna elaborate on the intersection of Orchard and the Connector Road. Um, like I said, it's gonna be under stop sign control. Uh, we don't anticipate the traffic from this development would warrant the need for a traffic signal. Um, this will be verified by King County Division Transportation as we. Continue our discussions with them and as they continue the review of our some metals and traffic studies. And then the access system, as you saw on the site plan, with the two curb cuts on the uh Connector Road will be adequate in accommodating the traffic. Uh, finally, this is an exhibit that shows uh the proposed improvements that we're anticipating on Orchard Road at the. Uh, east west connector. Uh, we are anticipating widening the uh the roadway. Currently, it has a four-lane undivided cross-section, so we'll be widening it coming from the south. A two-accommodative northbound left turn lane. So anyone coming from the south, turning left onto the connector road will have a dedicated. Left turn lane, so they will be removed from the through traffic, providing a safe movement for those vehicles. Similarly, coming from the north or northeast, uh, we'll be widening the road to accommodate a deceleration lane. Again, to allow these tra- the traffic that is slowing down to make a right-hand turn on to connect the road to be able to do it safely. And then at the connector road approach to Orchard Road will have two exiting lanes. One will be for left-hand turn lane. And one would be for right-hand turn lane, again, under stops on control. And, you know, this design is preliminary. Uh, we will uh again have it uh vetted with King County. And there'll be the agency that would approve it permitted in order for the improvement to be constructed. Thank you.
A handful of other slides just showing the the elevation, the architect, architectural elevations of our clubhouse. Apartment buildings themselves. The floor plans or the floor plates, I should say, for both first and second floors. And then it just included a couple um images of of what are a kind of a three-D version of our floor plan showing. You know, apartments with and without attached garages. You can see that the image on the right shows uh what a two-car tandem garage would look like. So as you can tell, we've put a lot of thought into this. Um, it's probably a little bit more detailed than you're used to for a community of a whole meeting. Um, but we think there's a lot, there's a lot of things, a lot of great things worth to do here. We're excited about the opportunity. We're excited about the opportunity to invest upwards of about fifty million dollars into the village of North Aurora. Now, we feel strongly that this is a project that meets the demands of what's in need in this community in terms of an underserved market. We think it's a plan that has an abundance of green space, lots of walking paths throughout the development itself. Any significant increment increment in taxes upwards of eight hundred thousand dollars at the end of the day? We also think that there's a significant impact in additional consumer spending in the marketplace. When you look at average incomes here. And discretionary spending, what that impact of new people into the community can look at. We think this could be exit in excess of roughly two million dollars a year, which we think is great for the corridor, the community, as well as, you know, those retailers that may be struggling today. We think with the infrastructure we're putting in and the rooftops we're bringing, this can be catalytic for the twenty acres of future commercial zone, commercial land to ourself. At the end of the day, we think this is a development that represents the highest and best use for this property. Thank you.
Discussion. So how many people do you think we're adding here? Five hundred or so?
Probably just shy of five hundred. We we typically see about one point six to one point seven occupants per apartment. It's in the the mid four to five hundred range.
How about children for schools on what?
Yeah, so on average, we we average roughly about ten school-aged children per one hundred apartments. So on a project of this size, we'd expect to see, call it twenty-six plus or minus. Uh, school-aged children. Some of those already may be in the district, uh, and some would be new to the district. It's what we'd expect to see.
Like how you moved the clubhouse. I think that's a good adjustment. You kept the trees or trying to keep the trees for the concern of the one neighbor. Is that close to the hardware? Is that hardware just south of there, that area there? Is that the connector road by by?
That's a new one.
Oh, it's a new one, okay.
Hey, Mark, hardware would be down in this area here.
Oh, okay. I see where it's at. I don't know. I think it fits well in there, in my opinion.
Can you explain the sidewalk again that I couldn't quite follow? Or Mike from Mooseheart Road, it cuts it cuts through into this development?
Yeah, so what it is, is there's a existing sidewalk here on the south part of West Mooseheart Road. They would be adding a public sidewalk in here. That would continue and then connect to a path that they're gonna install, um, moving down the south to the south here. Um, again, this is unincorporated area here, so the likelihood of getting sidewalking time soon is is, um, it could be very far off. So they elected to do a a path here. So they elected to do a path here to connect down to the connector road. The connector road will have sidewalks in the north portion here, assuming that the sidewalks we put on the south portion upon development of this southern portion. And what they're going to do is there's going to be a private path on this portion of the development here along Orchard Road. There's not going to be a public sidewalk, but again, because there was no, there's no public sidewalk that connects here, going to White Oak Drive here. There's no sidewalk here, nor is there one south of the site down on Orchard Commons here. So essentially, this would be putting in a sidewalk to nowhere, but there would be a part of walkway on the property that would, you know, discussing with the petitioner, be open to the public use.
So you're looking for our feedback on?
Yeah, just in general, because again, the annexation requires that sidewalks be on all.
Public on Orchard.
Yeah, on Orchard and Deer Path and Mooseheart, and then the connector road.
Is your project fenced in or no?
No, it is not fenced.
I was wondering if the color scheme in the video is representative of what it's going to be, or that's just to be determined?
No, we've, no, what you've seen is what we design, and those are our intentions.
Okay.
I'm excited. I think it's a great development. I think it's perfect for that spot. Thank you.
I think it fits in well there. I'm thinking you'll probably get a lot of, a lot of people want to rent there, you know? So people need a place to live. We want them in North Aurora. Help our business there. We're going to have some new businesses coming in, customers.
I like the project. I think it was very nice. I think it'll be a good addition over there.
So you said there's going to be a traffic study done regarding a stop sign?
Yeah, we have a traffic study ongoing right now. So for sure, a stop sign. We don't believe that a traffic signal will be warranted at the connector road intersection with, with Orchard. So we're, we're in the process of collecting more traffic counts and putting it full analysis together, and that's then shared with King County DOT, and who ultimately has the jurisdiction of.
Is that right in, right out, or?
The intersection of the connector road with Orchard will be a full movement intersection, so you can make
Both ways.
Left and left out, right in, right out. Yes.
Yeah, my, my only thought maybe would be, if that's a stop sign, it might be tough to turn left out of there, to go north. And then I think, I'm, I'm thinking maybe people to get north on Orchard Road might, might then backtrack around and go down Mooseheart Road over to White Oak. And that, that I don't think I'd, I'd like to see a whole lot of that. If that, if that ends up being the case, I don't, it's hard to predict that. But I would prefer to not see people from that apartment complex going back through that neighborhood over there off of White Oak.
Or they may go south to Oak Street.
Well, if they go south, that's no problem. But if people looking to go north on Orchard, that might be tough to go north if it's just a stop sign. So obviously, all the traffic study.
That's what we're looking, we're going to be looking at in more detail, but the, you know, the primary movement, if you think about it in the morning, would be going south.
Of course. Yeah, no, absolutely.
The amount of, number of people that want to turn left to go north, it's not going to be significant. And, you know, yes, it's not going to be an easy movement, but there are two signals, one at White Oak and one, one at Oak to the south, help create some gaps. So people, you know, people will be able to make a left now. But yeah, I, it's not going to be an easy movement.
Yeah, that would be.
And that's why we're widening it, so you got two lanes coming out, so if there's somebody waiting to make a left, the majority of people want to go south are not impeded.
Sure. No, I like everything about it. That would be my only concern.
Yeah, so though we're reviewing the traffic counts with KDOT, KDOT has the final say on the matter. The annexation agreements require that the property across the street, the Mango Creek property, upon development of that property, an intersection or a signal would be required to be put in where there would be some caution between both developments. But upon this property being developed, a signalized intersection would need to be installed.
I, I, I love the project. I think it's awesome. The only question I have is, you, you had talked about this being a potential walking community, walking to different areas. The only concern I have is if we don't put a sidewalk along Orchard Road in that property to the south, that would require a sidewalk if developed, correct, under the PUD?
Yeah, it, it would. There being, you know, there's no sidewalk on the southern portion as well, if you're looking at Orchard Commons. Let me wait one second here, Mark. The Orchard Commons Development where hardware is, there is no, there was no sidewalk required as part of that development either. They're using some of the private road networks. I imagine some of the pedestrian movement within both these sites could be handled through some of the private side. If you look here, too, they have a walkway that would extend along this portion of the property.
The only, my point being that i- if we're going to put five hundred people there, close to five hundred people, we have a five-star restaurant less than a quarter of a mile south of there, or, you know, two hundred and fifty yards, and we're building other restaurants in that same area, it'd be nice to give them an opportunity to walk to those restaurants from that development. And, and, you know, I, if, depending on what goes south of the access road, I, I think it, just thinking ahead, rather than just saying we're not going to require a sidewalk, it might, i- it might be something to think about as we're, as we're thinking about that, because there's going to be, you're going to have hardware, you're going to have Fortunato, you're going to have other fast food areas and.
Taco Bowl.
Right.
Starbucks.
I think people like sidewalks in general myself.
Are we talking about the other property, though? Is that what you're talking about?
Right, but if we don't allow it here or require a public sidewalk, then, and we're not going to require it here, once they get the hardware, they can walk through, like you said, the access, the parking lots. It's hard to force, try to foresee what's going to go in that southern part. But I'm just saying, without knowing that, maybe to forego, if we forego the sidewalk, it's going to be gone forever. So we might want to think about, do we want a public sidewalk there to encourage people to walk to those restaurants?
Yeah, what we can do is that obviously, we're going to be bringing this back to another committee discussion, not at the next meeting either. So we'll have a little bit of time to, to look into those things. We'll look into the area sidewalk network. Again, south of Orchard Commons, you have the unincorporated property. And then you move further south to Orchard Commerce, where there is no sidewalk either. So there really is not a lot of sidewalk connectivity there. We've been relying on private access with Madison Drive, Maxwell Drive, and Orchard Commons being private to help move pedestrians through there. And I imagine that might be somewhat similar in this situation as well.
Another, one thing to keep in mind is that KDOT will control whether that connector gets signalized, and it probably won't meet warrants. I mean, King County won't approve a signal unless it meets warrants. Warrants are developed by the state.
Yeah.
But at some point, a combination of the development of this property, the one to the south and the one on the west side, will trigger a light, no doubt. And I believe that the annexation agreements in combination address that somewhat generally, but address the idea that, that there is some kind of shared responsibility to contribute to a light that will be warranted at some point by a combination of that development. So that's something to think about in terms of the annexation agreement and how we address that. It probably won't be warranted by this development.
A question I had, too, I was, I'm kind of curious myself if, if actual KDOT is going to allow a sidewalk to be in their right-of-way. That's something I wanted to take a look at into as well. And also, too, I don't know if there's been any discussion about would they require an acceleration lane coming, making that southbound, moving on to Orchard Road? Has that been part of the discussion?
Yeah, we're anticipating, when you're south on an orchard, that there'd be a decel lane to turn right into the connector road. And then while exiting, that there'd be an acceleration
Okay.
right there as well to turn right and go south on Orchard.
Okay, because I know down south, there's more pork chop at Tanner Road.
Very nice.
Oh, I'm in total agreement with it. It's a very attractive thing, and it's well-placed, and I'm all for it. So, very good.
Yeah.
It looks good. I know some people there are not fans of apartments, but, you know, it's kind of a necessary thing. We do need rooftops every so often. In the past, we've done studies on how come we're not getting restaurants and things, and it's always the population is too low. So this is one way to do it, and it is a nice buffer from residential to commercial and beats having, you know, if you're living behind it, to have like a Costco or a back of a something that you're just looking at. So that's nice product. And, you know, many North Row residents that sold their house or retired, and they are renting in the Springs, they're renting over Randall Highlands. So, I mean, it's, you know, to use my own residence as well. So, yeah, we look forward to it. I think you heard the board speak on a few items. And look forward to our next committee meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no exec session. Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
I'm sorry, say hi.
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 All right, good night.